Okay.
Really?
That's right.
I guess we have from the financials first?
I am reporting on financial, a financial I had to approve on April 1st and this is no April fool joke. It's actually a $390 travel encumbrance for JFS for some training. So I'm just reporting and there's no actual required than that.
Just a report, okay. Then the next item?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board of Approve and Execute the Minutes for the Meeting of March 26, 2015.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board of Approve and Execute the Minutes for the Meeting of March 31, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye. Ready?
The financials include supplemental preparation for the Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Block Grant Fund for grant-funded purchase of NBTs and also the Juvenile Court's Care and Custody Fund for contracted services. Cash transfers out of the General Fund for portions of 2015 funding for the county home and core technologies. Cash transfer for the workers' comp, compensation premium payment as well as the departmental credits. Purchase order for Keystone U.S. Management for the purchase of post-circuit TV equipment for the safety center in the amount of $32,987 and a payment to Lakeland Management Systems for payment number seven for the county engineer's new office building project in the amount of $58,466.
That's payment number seven. How many are there? Do you know of them?
Well, it'll just be as they go along. I don't think they have a set number of payments because they're about 66% finished.
About 60, okay.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board of Approve and Execute Resolution Number 15-041, itemizing the financials for the meeting of April 7, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
Okay. What you got?
Okay, the first one is for the contract services for Stephen Cisarito for the Burton Legion Hall Project ADA Bathroom and Entryway under Grant BF-14 in the amount of $5,250 and also for the President to sign his tech certification for ADA compliance. It's actually stating that he is certified to do ADA plans and jobs.
Do you want to go ahead, ma'am? Do it individually or did you want to do five and six? That's also for Burton, isn't it?
Yeah, the second one is for notice to proceed. Now that the contract will be signed, then we give him an notice to proceed to begin working on the project.
Okay.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board of Approve and Execute the Agreement between the Jugg County Board of Commissioners and Stephen Cisarito, AIA Architect for Professional Services to Jugg County for the creation of architectural plans for the Burton American Legion Hall ADA Bathroom and Entryway renovations under Grant Number B-F-14-1AZ-1 in the amount of $5,250 and further approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the architect's certification compliance with minimum standards for accessibility by the physically disabled. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board of Approve and Authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice to proceed for Stephen Cisarito, AIA Architect for the creation of architectural plans for the Burton American Legion Hall ADA Bathroom and Entryway renovations under Grant Number B-F-14-1AZ-1.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioners Claypool?
Aye. Okay. You got one more?
Uh, the next two items are kind of late, but this is for the revolving loan fund administration agreement that is signed every three years in the state and they ask that we pass a resolution to include in the agreement. So these two items are for that administration agreement.
So seven and eight are basically this?
Well, one's just the resolution that's included in the agreement.
Okay. And you know I asked any of your questions on this yesterday, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll be talking more about that. Okay, go ahead, continue the book.
Here is the resolution and then the agreement that is just used this time. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board of Approve and Execute Resolution Number 15-042 to enter into the revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Development Services Agency. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board of Approve and Authorize the President of the Board to execute the revolving loan fund administration agreement between the State of Ohio Development Services Agency and the Jugg County Board of Commissioners to be effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2017.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Then you also have to sign the next one.
Oh, this will be done?
That's the joint one, so yeah.
I know, may not allow them that yet. At least I'm color coding, so like, you know, I know which one is.
We'd be better off, we could just put our fingerprint on it.
There, we got two more?
Yeah, the next two are both reports. The first one is for the BF-14 first quarter report. We do status reports several times throughout the period of the grant. It's showing that I have not received any money for the grant, but I have expended some with just our dining levies and our fair housing and I am waiting for our draw status to come in. Oh, you want me to do the both? And the second one is for the housing report. Same thing, we have to do annual report for the housing report. We don't have any activity in that line. The only activity we have is if a past client, because we don't do those services anymore, down payment assistance and rehab, is if somebody sold their house or we recapture the mortgage amount for that program.
Right, it's just him. Yeah.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board of Approve and Authorize the President of the Board to Execute the Community Development Block Grant Status Report for Grant BF-14-1AZ-1 for the period September 1st, 2014 through March 17, 2015. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board of Approve and Authorize the President of the Board to Execute the Housing Semi-Annual Program Income Report for the period July 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2015.
I predict those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Jenny, I am not going to forget your question. Said I am not going to forget the question.
I'm sure you answered.
Morning.
Good morning.
Welcome back. Walk on a little stiff still.
A little bit. What happens when I take you in?
Do you write in on your motorcycle sign?
I know. That is no longer in existence.
You don't have that title on your name anymore, huh?
No.
Okay, guys. So you've got the change order?
Yeah, the first one is the closeout of a project from last year with Eclipse Company for the Munn and Taylor-May intersection improvement project, savings on the contract of about $8,400.
Cool. I always liked it when you hear savings.
The county engineer's office is requesting the Board of Approve and Execute Change Order Number One and Final, decreasing the contract with Eclipse Company LLC for the improvement of the intersection of Munn Road with Taylor-May Road in Auburn Township in the amount of $8,373.60.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
The next three items, we're asking the Commissioners to award contracts for Old State Road, Ravenna Road, and Chagrin Road. They're just paving projects. Traffic will be maintained on all of them. Currently, we're finishing up a project out on Old State Road from last year. Some ditching and some drainage work, culvert work. This is not related to that, but obviously that one has to finish up before this one can come in. These three shouldn't be very disruptive whatsoever. The first one on Old State, got a real good bid, came in $180,000 under the estimate. Ravenna Road came in $20,000 under the estimate and then Chagrin Road came in $80,000 under the estimate. So what this allowed me to do is I'm gonna put out to bid, there's two box culverts, one's actually a bridge over on Heath Road that I wanted to do this year but wasn't sure I'd have enough money. This will allow me to do that, so we'll be able to replace those pretty much at the end of their useful life. We'll be over here soon with the plans for Heath Road, very, all the way up on the gravel section, almost up to Lake County by Gem Road. There's two, they're wooden boxes actually. In our experience, the wooden boxes we've pulled out in the last couple of years are in much worse shape than they appear, so I'm very happy that this worked out the way it did.
Due to the weather that we've seen, are you seeing, are you gonna see any additional road work that is necessary? It's kind of a hard weather.
Most of that has to do with our maintenance crews. Yeah, we ordered an extra semi of crack seal and we're hoping that they all go down back where they belong. There'll be some full depth repair we're gonna have to do that above and beyond our normal maintenance because two years in a row, that's pretty abusive on the roads.
Why, why we're all, I'm not complaining, I'm asking, the three of these all came in under the estimates. Is there some phenomenon going on in the asphalt business or something?
Well, we're not sure of that and that's why we always put a feeler out. This year, we put Rapids Road out because it was all local funds, all our money. And we put it out, it was a strictly paving job and that one came in extremely well.
It was last week, wasn't it? Or the last week or the week before?
Couple weeks ago now. What was that under? That was huge.
Yes, 100.
Better than that, wasn't it?
It was like 19, I forget the exact, but it was a lot, way under, a lot larger than what we would have expected. 33%, I think it was, more in that range.
We're seeing asphalt prices lower than they have been in the last couple of years, so we're encouraged, but we've watched them, they started to creep up now. I think it's contractors needing work to come out of the gates, us bidding these things out early is, it's always effective. It seems to be even more so this year. But you'll see on Ravenna Road there, that's a nice big job and there was only $20,000 and, you know, on an $800,000 job, $20,000 is not much money.
Yeah, attributed a little bit to the low gas prices, oil prices?
I would, I would think so, but they don't always, they don't always job because it has a lot to do with the process by which they make the AC, the liquid in the asphalt or the glue, if you will, asphalt cement, the AC. The process used to be, it's made out of leftovers from what you can't make gas out of. So a lot of time, what we've seen why asphalt's gone up as much as it has in the last, you know, seven, eight, 10 years here is because the refineries are able to process more of the crude oil, so it leaves a lot less dregs left over to make asphalt out of. So now that commodity has a higher value, so that's what we've seen. So we don't generally see the asphalt prices themselves fluctuate with fuel too much, but obviously hauling is a major factor with this. They can only bring 20, 22 tons at a time and as much as we put down. So it does play part of it, but not in the asphalt itself. In the delivery, it does.
I'm just trying to get this clear in my own head. I mean, it's early in the season and do they have an abundance of this material that's built up through the winter? You know, it's a byproduct of them distilling the fuel and I would think that they've got maybe a surplus, if that's the word I'm looking for. They have a large quantity and then that'll diminish as the season goes on until the price goes up?
Well, as the year goes on, demand does go up, but I think the market, as the market bears, yeah, there's some truth to that, but there's only so much they can store and it's all based on production rates of fuel. So based on how much fuel they're making, then there's so much leftover for asphalt, so it would stand to reason that, but I don't know how much they actually store and how much gets shipped overseas as far as the stuff that's used for making asphalt. And it has such a value that they're, you know, they pay, they're exact opposite of us in Florida. You can't pave in the summer down there, so this stuff still has a value.
Okay, so they ship it down to the warmer climates so they can work when we're not?
Exactly. So you don't see, you know, it's not like the plowing industry where you take the plows off and you're done, you know, it just, the business goes somewhere else. But at any rate, we're pleased with the numbers we're getting. We don't anticipate that to continue because as I said, you see Ravenna Road, there was only 20,000 under and it's mostly asphalt job, $20,000 isn't much.
Okay, ready to read that?
We want to do them separately, two of them together.
Can you do them together?
The county engineer's office is requesting the Board of Award the bid to Ronya Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Old State Road CH 6, Section 2 through H in Middleville of Parkland Township in the amount of $712,272.40 as they represented the lowest and best bid. The bid bond submitted shall be held to service the performance fund for this project. The county engineer's office is requesting the Board of Award the bid to Ronya Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Ravenna Road CH 6, Section 2 through D in Charlton Township in the amount of $742,475.16 as they represented the lowest and best bid. The bid bond submitted shall be held to service the performance fund for this project. The county engineer's office is requesting the Board of Award the bid to Ronya Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Chagrin Road CH 9, Section C through E in Bainbridge Township in the amount of $416,624.2 as they represent the lowest and best bid. The bid's submitted, it shall be held to service the performance fund for this project.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You too, Joe.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Hi, how are you?
Oh, fine, thank you.
They've never done this before.
Oh, really? Oh.
Thank you.
You have to give us a speech.
I know, right. Don't be nervous, but okay.
Don't be nervous. Be very nervous.
I'm Julie Weef, I'm CASA Director. I was named the CASA Director as of December 31st of this year, so I have two separate things I'm presenting. We have a grant and I'm here for you guys to accept that. We will be going to two days in May. We submitted something for VOKA, who then will reimburse us. We're spending three staff members. We've been encouraged to attend because there's gonna be some information on the VOKA and any changes that may happen in the future, so we've been encouraged to attend since we are a program that is partially funded through VOKA and SBA. So I'm asking for $1,747.23 to be approved.
Okay, and the second one?
The second one is also, we did, we were granted a small amount for some training materials that we've asked for. The one is for an updated DSM-V, which is new, and also some training materials for trauma training, which is huge in what we do. So we're also awarded that as well of $706.84.
The Pro Bay Juvenile Court is requesting the Board of Approve and Authorize the President of the Board to Execute the VOKA and SBA Grant Award and Acceptance Form, Grant 2015 VOKA 12385230 for CASA for Kids for reimbursement of training expenses for three CASA staff members to attend the Ohio Attorney General's Training Conference in May in the amount of $1,747.23. This grant is for the period of October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015. The Pro Bay Juvenile Court is requesting the Board of Approve and Authorize the President of the Board to Execute the VOKA and SBA Grant Award and Acceptance Form, Grant 2015 VOKA 12431764 for CASA for Kids in the amount of $706.84 for the purchase of DVD training materials for CASA volunteers, $603.90 and a copy of the DSMV manual, $102.94. This grant is for the period October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
That wasn't hard, was it?
No, thank you for making it easy.
Yeah, we're pretty tough here. People go out of here crying, it's just a mess. Usually, it's us.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning. How are you?
Gina, how are you?
It was a very nice event you had.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Don't forget to wear blue tomorrow.
That's right.
Thought I would. Give them a plug.
What's the reason for that?
Child abuse prevention. It's just the day to wear.
It's an ongoing thing?
Oh, it's the whole month.
Do I have to wear blue all month?
You don't have to wear it all month, but if you're going to pick a day to wear blue, tomorrow's the day.
Tomorrow's the day.
If you wear it all month, wash it every time.
Right, I know. I know. That's how you tell me I have so much blue.
Good morning. We're here on a couple of policy revisions for Child Family Services. The first one is our COPE policy, which is care of people in emergency. Child Family Services has the responsibility of providing both child protective services and resource coverage 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. And this is a slight change to our policy to allow for us to double the amount that we're currently paying staff and supervisors to be on call on holidays. So I'm, that's the only change that is really here with regards to holidays. Staff is currently paid $35 a holiday just to be on call and then if they called out, they get their time in half. Supervisors are currently receiving $25 on holiday. So we would ask that Commissioners consider doubling that. What we're finding is maybe the non-family oriented holidays like Presidents' Day, we're actually busier because a lot of the agencies we deal with are still open, so we get a lot of COPE calls on those days. So overall, the increase would be about $540 for the year, but I think it would show some acknowledgement to the staff by being able to double that. The other thing we're asking is that the supervisors have an increase. They actually carry or are on call a week at a time. They're currently paid $100 a week. We're asking that to be increased to 150, but we used to have two supervisors on call. A regular supervisor would get $100 a week to be on call and another supervisor who specialized in sex abuse cases would be getting 50. So it's really a watch. When that person left, Meredith Myers, we didn't replace her in that specific role and so our supervisors have taken over those responsibilities also.
Well, maybe you can explain the implications of being on call and how that kind of, if it's what you might otherwise be able to do as an individual?
Well, it's just what that is. I mean, when you leave work for the day, then your work doesn't stop and so you have to make sure that you're available for, as a supervisor, for your workers to call because you are involved with making the decision as to whether or not you're going to screen that case in, if there's something that we need to do that night. You're assisting that worker in the direction and so again, you have to be available in your plans, you know, no matter what it is. If I'm at, you know, a child's game, I have to, you know, excuse myself to be available to the person who is on call. So it does limit some of what you're able to do for us for that week, the workers a little bit more, so.
And it runs a week at a time?
For the supervisors, we're on for a week. The workers, they have to be on a certain amount of days in like a two or three month sort of schedule and so some of them get all of their days done in a row, some like to split it up, but as supervisors, we're on for a full week.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board of Approve the Revised Compensation Policy for the Care of People in Emergencies COPE at the recommendation of the Executive Director to be effective April 12, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
The second policy we have before the Board has to do with the overtime policy and we just want to bring our policy in line with Commissioner's recent change. So it has to deal with the hours that would be considered in the calculation of overtime and so we will no longer include sick leave, vacation leave, comp time, other paid time. The only thing that would be included would be holiday comp.
Right. Same. Yeah, that's just standard.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board of Approve the Revised Compensation Policy for Overtime Compensatory Time at the recommendation of the Executive Director to be effective April 12, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to wear blue.
Thank you.
Yeah, you were wearing the blue today, so.
I'm wearing the day.
I see that sway again in the morning.
I know.
I'm on the blue today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, number 19, Transit Department's asking you guys to accept the resignation of David Trask. He was a part-time transit driver that we hired and just finished his training program. Very good individual, very good person, but had a full-time job opportunity up here and was remorseful, but based on his economic issues at home, he had to take a full-time job. Sorry to see him go, but he got an executive decision to resign, so.
What does our training consist of? Refresh my mind, memory. I mean, these guys need CDLs?
No, they do not.
They do not? So we are not training them for a CDL?
No, we are not. We train them to follow ODOT and the Department of Aging's policies regarding the handling of individuals who use public transit, whether they're seniors, people with mental or physical challenges, to go through a training program. That's a little bit controlled by the state, what we do with training as far as the drive program or hand nets, again, handling persons. We train safely how to drive an embarked vehicle. A lot of folks don't come from a place where they drive, you know, the biggest things are minivan, this is a little bit bigger than minivan, so. And then we also, we have our internal training on the computer dispatching and electronic fare, that kind of thing, so.
So a lot of our training that you provide to our drivers you require wouldn't necessarily be an asset in them finding another job. It may, but it wouldn't. In other words, when you're training and then we give them a CDL at the end of the training period, then they can take that CDL and go work for somebody else for more money. In a, yeah, in a previous life, we ran into that and we finally had to make them sign an agreement that if they didn't work with us for X amount of time, they owed us money for the training.
No, we don't have a CDL and I reckon unless they went and got another, another driving job. driving job, driving a transit bus somewhere, that would be the only advantage.
Okay, I just didn't, you know, I mean, it's like.
Yeah, I don't want to be a training ground for somebody and they leave, I understand that.
Yeah.
Do the transit bus drivers downtown Cleveland, the big buses, I don't know what their passengers?
They have CDLs, yes.
They probably do have CDLs.
Our buses are right under the minimum of, we have 14 seats when you go to 15, or 14 positions, I should say, 12 seated and two for mobility devices. And when you go to 15, that's when you have to get a CDL.
Yeah, school bus drivers have CDLs, transit bus drivers have CDLs.
How many passengers do the transit buses downtown, period, the big ones, do you know? Around 60? Is it that many?
Depending on, if you look at that health line one, they probably carry 75, I would think, and a regular, normal bus anywhere handles between 48 and 60 people. Depending on the age, size of the seats and stuff, there's a configuration, there's a lot of different configurations you can put in these buses, the way the seats space and all this other stuff, so.
It's like the airlines, moving closer, moving farther.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Places for bicycles to hang out. Okay, you want to read it?
The Transit Department is requesting the board accept the resignation of David Trask, part-time driver, to be effective April 1st, 2015.
So move. Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
And number 20, the next one in conjunction with that, I'll ask again to advertise for two part-time driver positions. That would be to replace Dave, and then the one that I have talked to a couple, probably two previous sessions going forward near the end of March, and I would ask for one more going forward. Give us a lot of flexibility as far as being able to work with folks and address some of those issues of middle-of-the-day slack time that we had talked about, so reduce that as much as we can.
The Transit Department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for two part-time drivers, number 22-2210-1 positions. These positions remain posted until built.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we've got meetings coming up, Township Association meeting on Wednesday, the 8th, at 6:30. NOAC has got a number of meetings on Friday, external affairs, policy planning. The commissioners have a meeting on the 14th, Planning Commission meets 7 o'clock on the 14th. The county budget summit is the 8:30 on the 15th. We've got a board of revision on the 20th, Family First Council on the 20th, commissioners meeting on the 21st, commissioners meeting on the 23rd, the Maple Festival in Charton Square, the 23rd through the 26th. Everybody wants to be there for that. And the commissioners have a regular session on the 28th at 9 o'clock.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
I second, all in favor?
Yes. I was going to tell you on that Maple Festival thing.